It's nine thirty, we'll fill the October meeting at Wood County Waters Supervisors to order. Um, as you've probably noticed, that is not Laura. This is, we should change places here. Joe's been complaining about them when they're ready. So.
I wondered why he was looking so good. I just paid a comment. Geez, you sit next to Trent. I did you.
It's a sweet play. She's someone in the yes. Ah, separate you kid. Now that is awesome.
All right, we uh, we had a couple of people who thought they may need the excuse this morning uh, because of some appointments uh, that are both online because this morning Supervisor Hamilton and Schultz. So they are in attendance. Uh, with that being said, I call Supervisor Han, we come forth for the invocation. I vest the body of right. We will extend it one a pati.
Morning, there go.
Morning.
Morning. Uh, please follow your vest and join me in prayer if you feel so inclined. As we begin our meeting today, let's take a moment to remember who we're here for, the people of Wood County. They trust us to make decisions that keep our community safe, our services strong, and our futures bright. Every bolt we take and every decision we make should reflect that trust. Let us also remember the employees who make everything we do possible. The people who follow the roads, answer the phones, care for our cards, and keep us safe. Their work is the backbone of what we do, and they deserve our all support. If we approach today's work with open minds, steady judgment, and let our actions lead the outcomes that truly benefit those who we serve, thank you Wendy Ma.
Is doing pleasure, ladies?
I pledge with the suit to life. The United States of America, and it's a very solid courage to say. One is. This is all that does.
Hey, you're supervisor, huh? Thank you for here today. Uh, before you say, you can get it today, uh, you know, we currently have a, a mood judge, which I could give you just, or actually we have our branch three, our newest judge, uh, Eleanor Pluchak, stood over for treasure wolf. Uh, in that seat, that one he would like to say a couple of words as well from you. Uh, I guess you could read your welcome and us to the first floor. Kind of how it works.
Hello, um, my name is Emily Nolan Pluchak. I am the newly appointed branch three judge. I wanted to introduce myself for everyone who doesn't know me. Um, I was born and raised in Madison. My parents were both born and raised in Kekana. And I spent a lot of time um, growing up in Kekana, visiting grandparents, that gambling members and everyone there. I am the oldest of three children and the first person in my family to go to law school. I went to college at UW Madison and then on to law school at Marquette. I'm the proud mom of thirteen year old twin boys, Declan and Ryland. I was a public school kid and they are public school kids as well. They attended elementary school at Grow Open and are now in the seventh grade at Rams. Um, Declan and Ryland started playing tackle football in third grade. And uh, for the Raptors, in this fall, they played for their seventh grade team, the Lamb. Um, Lincoln High School is very much looking forward to then making it over there to play football. For those of you have, who have seen or met my children, they're giant. So uh, that's been great for me as a mom because I but had to worry about them playing football because they likely aren't getting hurt. So hopefully it stays that way. Um, prior to being an appointed judge, I was uh, a, an employee for the state college defenders office for eighteen years. I started at the staff attorney and then was promoted to um, local attorney manager for Wood and Adams County. Um, I just want to throw this out there. It's always kind of like open in the room. I think some people worry as a public defender that I will be socked on crying. That is not at all true. I occurred every excuse, every story, everything you could possibly hear. So anything I'm hopefully tougher because I heard the excuse. I want to hear the accountability. As part of my grant, she pretty do these, I am also the drug court judge. Prior to becoming the drug court judge, um, I sent eighteen years as a team member on the drug court team. So I already had all the training um, and education and all of those years experience that I can bring to the position. Additionally, um, as part of the drug court team, I had a chance to work the law enforcement and probation on the defense bar and the district attorney's office. And I, I really know the value of bringing people together to create successful and cost effective program. It is very important to everyone that they ever stand that I am a Wood County community member. I lived here. I chose to raise my children here. And um, this is my community. I haven't lacked. Um, I'm very community focused. I want this community to be the best and say this, community, it can, can meet. I am very honored to be a judge in Wood County and I take it very seriously. I understand that um, with it comes a lot of responsibility, but I'd happy to take on that responsibility because I do want to make Wood County a better place for everyone to live in. That's just a little spiel about me. Thank you for listening. I'll be in the back of the um, room today. And otherwise, my door is always open down in branch three. Step by if you have questions, do you want to talk? I'm always available. Thank you.
Well, Bobby, right? Uh, I had a conversation the other day with uh, Judge Brazel. The conversation about, we had the same judges here forever and ever. Uh, and you would have been here for twenty-three years before you were the senior judge, and now you get past Judge Brazel, who had nobody here more than two years. So I would encourage the county board supervisors to take the opportunity to go meet some of those judges. Obviously, they, their branches depend on us for budgets and other things. So you typically don't interact a lot with the judicial branch. We do as a different far and has, but take the opportunity to go down and talk to them because we're, we're negotiating dollars there right now. Thank you very much and, and welcome you out. All right, as we move forward, uh, minutes of the previous session, I need a motion to a cool. Or at least I need a motion by condemning second by Graham. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All in favor of approval to be seen by by I?
By.
And opposed? And that motion carries. Uh, as we move forward, we have no resignations today. Under appointments and reappointments, the, is, there we have, anybody have a problem, we take you together. I don't know. So. All right, ethics committee, three-year term, Manceusa. Uh, Supervisor Han, the veteran service commission, a three-year term for Mike Fire. The civil service commission, a five-year term for Dave Lowry. And the South Central Library Board of Trustees and three-year term for Bill Pandani. Uh, most of I like him, sacrifice your flu. Any discussion? All in favor of those appointments was signified by I?
By.
And opposed? And that motion carries as well. Congratulations. Uh, do we have any public comments today? Is there any public comment? I don't see any. As we move forward, acknowledge, misses, recognitions, we have none of that today, other than that we recognize uh, our new judge. And then we get into the packet. We will have a special order of business later. Uh, Mike Gray, it's here from uh, the A D R C. Mike will do his annual report uh, when we get through the packet. All right, moving forward. Page four in your packet was the referral page. There's none there. Uh, that's probably did the WCA conferences ended and all those resolutions probably were dealt with at that particular time. Operations Committee of September twenty-fourth, pages five, six, and seven. Five, six, and seven. They're meeting from October fourteen on eight, nine, and ten Supervisor Lata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So my remarks this morning reflect that October fourteenth meetings. Um, I think the word dismayed would be too strong a word, but I'm searching for any other word that works. I, I listened to the budget discussions toward the end of the agenda for, well, felt like Mallor. And something wasn't sitting right with me. I thought about saying something toward the end of the meeting, um, didn't know where the proper place is. I'm not sure this is the proper place. But what Jake said in his prayer this morning spurred me to the comments that I'm gonna make right now. And so the parrot, a lot of what he said. Our skilled, trained staff is the most important part. It's the most important part of any large institution, any institution for that matter. The thought of reducing COLA from two point five percent down to one percent dismays me. I, I don't want a long-term, tenured, seasoned employee who's really good at their job to even think about looking elsewhere. So I plan on attending the Tuesday, November fourth, operations committee meeting. Um, I hope the discussions go back to how we make those difficult monetary decisions that relate to. And COLA to me, to this supervisor, um, is somewhat sacred. I, just my feelings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other, any discussion there? All right, as we move forward in the packet, we have the monthly letter of comments from the county clerk on page eleven and twelve. You have the monthly update from the human resources department begins on thirteen and runs through page seventeen. Monthly update from the treasurer on eighteen. Employed wellness on page nineteen. And then we have a resolution beginning at page twenty runs through twenty-one uh, for public safety and operations.
This will be resolution twenty-five dash ten dash one. To provide for unanticipated revenue from the Bureau of Traffic Safety housed with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation's Division of State Patrol to finance additional patrol for seatbelt enforcement from November first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Fiscal note, the cost refunded in the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five budget are in the traffic police overtime function. The adjustment to the budget totals forty-six hundred dollars and baby cents.
And a motion by boy and a second by Bry. Any discussion? If there any discussion? All in the papers, resolution, I, oh, let's go to the board. Let's go to the board. Move your answer quick. Be in a clear spot. Supervisor Schultz.
What?
Supervisor Hamilton? What do you think? What do you say, doll? I can say Supervisor Hamilton is bouncing in and out of some uh, yeah, appointments, so he may had to step out for, yeah, I'll stop. And we'll close her. And that resolution passes eighteen zero. Thank you very much. Or as we move forward to the packet, we hit uh, three resolutions that deal with tax-deed properties. Uh, begins on page twenty-two, runs through twenty-six. If there any objection, taking me together. No objection, then I ask the court to please read the resolution. This will be resolution twenty-five dash ten dash two to accept the offer of sale tax-deed property. Fiscal note, the offered amount minus real estate taxes, publication fee, and the tax deed expense netted us a gain of seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and several cents. Resolution twenty-five dash ten dash three to accept the offer of sale of tax-deed property. Fiscal note, the offered amount minus real estate taxes, the tax interest, publication fees, and tax deed expense nets us a gain of sixty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Resolution twenty-five to twenty-five dash ten dash four authorize the sale of tax-deed property back to the borrower owner. Fiscal note, the payment was two thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars, forty-two cents. And a motion by Buttke and a second by Roser. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? I just see the clear spot. Supervisor Schultz. And Supervisor Hamilton, are you with us? There he is. Okay, I heard that voice. I hear his voice. He's just passed nineteen zero, nineteen zero. All right, moving forward in the packet, page twenty-seven, eight, and nine, minutes of the Health and Human Services Committee from September twenty-fifth. We go to North Central Community Action, ages thirty and thirty-one. The monthly update from the health department begins on thirty-two and runs through page forty. Thirty-two to forty. Any questions there? And then from the Human Services Department, their comments begin on forty-one and run through forty-seven, forty-one through forty-seven. Be a chance to catch up there. And then we go to the veteran service officers report, begins at forty-eight, runs through forty-nine, forty-eight, and forty-nine. Which brings us to a resolution packet at PIP. It's about our server fourth. Uh, on page fifty from the Health and Human Service Committee.
This will be resolution twenty-five dash ten dash five to request additional state funding to offset the federal funding cuts for counties for administration of a supplemental nutrition assistance program or food share in the state of Wisconsin. Fiscal note, across to Wood County.
What's about Brian? Second by Zerfu. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Can I ask you please both? Supervisor Schultz.
Yes.
Supervisor Hamilton?
Yes.
That resolution passes nineteen zero. All right, moving forward on page fifty-two and fifty-three, the public safety committee minutes from October thirteen. And right behind that, beginning on page fifty-four and runs through page seventy-one was the monthly before from the sheriff's department. Fifty-four through seventy-one. Page seventy-two uh, begins the minutes of the Conservation Education Economic Development Committee. They're meeting from Wednesday, October first, and that's seventy-two, seventy-three, and seventy-four. North Central Wisconsin Tourism Partnership, seventy-five, six, and seven. Their minutes from August thirteenth on seventy-eight and seventy-nine. The Citizens Water Group, eighty and eighty-one. Minutes for the monthly update for extension begins at page eighty-two and runs through eighty-seven, each eighty-two to eighty-seven. And then we have the monthly report for land and water begins at eighty-eight and runs through page ninety-three. Eighty-eight to ninety-three. Landing and zoning, their monthly update, page ninety-four. Runs through ninety-seven, ninety-four to ninety-seven. And then we get to the September twenty-sixth meeting of the Judicial and Legislative Committee at pages ninety-eight and ninety-nine. Monthly update from the Child Support Agency on page one hundred. And the Thurford Courts one oh one. Court Council one oh two. From the Criminal Justice Department, pages one oh three and one oh four. The District Attorney's monthly update on one oh five. Register of probate one oh six. Register of deeds one oh seven. And then that gets us back to minutes, beginning on page one oh eight, running through page one-ten is the minutes of the Hurt Committee. They're meeting from October second and one oh eight through one-ten. And then we have the monthly update from the Highway Commissioner, begins on one-eleven and runs through one-twenty. Pages one-eleven through one-twenty. The parks report, one sixteen through one-twenty-four, one sixteen or twenty-four. And that's followed up by the resolution on one-twenty-five and one-twenty-six. And I'd ask for the clue for it there.
This will be ordinance number twenty-five dash ten dash six to amend access ordinance number four oh one, highway access control ordinance to include building setback lines. Fiscal note, none.
I'm mostly condemning a second by Graham. Do I have any discussion? Do I have any discussion? All right, seeing none, I have to be the boat. Supervisor Schultz.
Yeah.
Supervisor Hamilton? And once again, that resolution passes nineteen zero. We have a second resolution brought forth by the Hurt Committee. Uh, this one requires a two-thirds vote. I thought I know that and.
This will be resolution twenty-five dash ten dash seven to acquire land for addition to the Wood County Forest in exchange for land currently enrolled in the county forest program and to seek Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources approval of the proposed addition and withdrawal of Wood County forest land. Fiscal note, in addition to the land exchange, Wood County will see the training partner ninety-one hundred dollars based on the appraised land value. Wood County will be responsible for paying associated closing and recording fees.
Also by lighting them, second by try. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Supervisor Schultz.
Yes.
Supervisor Hamilton? That resolution also passes nineteen zero. All right, as you move forward, the PIP Committee, Proprietary Information Technology, pages one-twenty-nine and one-thirty, that's their meeting from Monday, October sixth. One-twenty-nine and one-thirty. And then we have the update from IT, begins on one-thirty-one and runs through one-thirty-seven. One-thirty-one through one-thirty-seven. We have the uh, a report from, we had a number of people uh, attend the AI Technology, this conference. They brought back some information and then we have the policy uh, that has been a result of that and other ongoing uh, input from the IT department, as well as a chart that policies on one-thirty-eight to one-forty-two. Some to treat a look at because we move forward. Uh, this is a really big issue and it's going to affect us in a lot of ways going forward. So every time that we have the opportunity to send somebody to a training, I want to make sure we get them there so we're not behind on this one. All right, moving forward again, page one forty-three, the monthly update from our facilities manager. And then one forty-four and one forty-five, the junior fair board minutes from August sixth. The Central Wisconsin State Fair minutes, one forty-six and one forty-seven from August eleventh. The Marshall Fairgrounds Commission, one forty-eight and one forty-nine, then renew to September twenty-fifth. I've got the minutes for the South Central Library System Board Trustees on one fifty and one fifty-one. And then we have the uh, County Library Board minutes, one fifty-two through one fifty-six, one fifty-two to one twenty-six. And then kind of at the end of the package here, we had the jail construction and act committee, their minutes uh, from September sixteen to nine fifty-seven and one fifty-eight. Are any questions from the packet there? All right, we've gone for that. So we have one thing further to do here today, and that's the annual part from the A D R C. Uh, we asked them to come in once here. We have Mike Gray here today. Like, if you come forward, join us at the podium. I'm sure you were looking forward to this. We've actually tried to schedule this a few times. We've had some conflict or my case and really appreciate you make the tent.
Oh, absolutely. I appreciate that too. You kind of sneak with you guys. So this to give you a little bit, I always do this. You get to listen mesh field. So every year I do this, but um, we are formed, we, we serve four counties at E D R C, Central Wisconsin, um, formed by those four counties to an intergovernmental agreement. Um, we serve Wood, Marathon, Lincoln, and Lele counties. And a part of that intergovernmental agreement is for me to come in and talk a few on an annual basis to just give you an update in regards to what's going on with the A D R C. So uh, we've had a lot of great success with any A D R C in the, in the services that we provide to our older adults, the adults with disabilities. Um, a lot of those service levels include dementia care support, uh, supporting caregivers, um, helping individuals get connected to support the resources to cut, to help them be as independent, healthy as, as they can be within their homes, um, or nutrition programs. Um, and also we do some prevention-based programs and we really focused in on falls prevention. Um, to be able to help individuals uh, prevent falls, which if you don't know, the state of Wisconsin is number one in the amount of falls in the, in the country. Uh, so doing prevention activities to prevent those is, is helpful for all aspects, including all of their, our systems. One thing that has impacted greatly is um, the EMS services that, that each city and municipality provide. So we've tried to connect and collaborate with them to, to talk about what those connections can be for them to connect individuals to us to get supports and services to hopefully prevent those falls, those, those nine-one-one calls. Um, as I spoke last year, we definitely had some challenges in regards to, to finances. Um, most specifically in regards to our nutrition programs. The demands and the dollars coming in are not, it's not aligning um, as well. So we've, we've had to make some, some challenging and difficult decisions. Uh, last year when I talked, we had just completed our budget and had the budget for a forty thousand uh, meal reduction within our meals on wheels uh, program over our four county region. Um, the uh, we took that, I, I took that as a personal challenge of trying to find other revenue streams and to try to figure out a solution to that problem. We were able to secure some grants, uh, one of them being the legacy foundation within um, Southwood County to be able to help support those, those meals going into our twenty-twenty-six budgets. Uh, we also secured a, a rank of United River Marathon County to help support meals with, within that budget. And we're opening up and soon we'll have opened up a, um, account like it's this close to being opened um, at the community foundation of, of North Central Wisconsin to be able to solicit donations to come into that program. People can utilize that as a tax uh, break or incentive, you know, for a donation towards that, that fund. And we can utilize that for some operation within our, our meals program. So we've tried to look at expanding those revenue streams and not just rely on one county levy, um, and then our state and our federal dollars, which are keeping up, are keeping pace with our demand and need. Um, I say that, and I also say that lightly, we did a lot of advocacy work as well, especially during the state budget process. Um, our state budget for nutrition support is drastically lower than the states around us. And so we did a lot of that, see the point that outlets and to help to support that. Unfortunately, we did not get an increase in that state budget. Will we continue those advocacy efforts? Um, I think that's what I have for you right now is in regards to an update. I'm happy to entertain any questions. I get early support. I appreciate the support that we have in the four counties. Um, I think our model is um, is, I will bias maybe, but I think our model of having a four-county region and the way you do it is the best in the state. We're able to um, we fulfill our requirements from the states um, and other players at the federal level at a really high level in regards to those contract requirements. Um, I see counties around us, especially our smaller uh, northern counties really struggle to meet the, the demands of our, the contractual expectations are. So I'm really proud of the work that we do and the support that we provide to our, our seniors and in our adults with disabilities. So have you entertained questions here?
Yes, you're right, Sunday. Um, you know, help me, I've fallen and I can't get up. That call that's me is what happens is they call an anguumer.
Sure.
And we have a need for a lift assist and and it's surprising the build came to four hundred and twenty dollars. For a lift assist, they fill twenty-two units. Does A D R C, it get involved in any of that?
Well, it's something we're trying to go a couple of different ways that we're trying to tackle that issue. One is, is some prevention-based things. So helping individuals to with our stepping on class to be able to be in the strength they need so they don't fall. But something that we are developing and actually is through the discussion with the Wisconsin Rapids mayor, was having a conversation in regards to the challenges are going on with the medical, with the EMS services of the volume of calls that they're getting for that specific thing of picking people up and then going on their way. Um, trying to work with individuals that come in contact with us, so developing a plan if you fall. So what does that look like if you were to fall? What is your plan and place that you're going to have for that? Because right now people are relying strictly, almost exclusively on EMS services coming to help them up. Now, if we, if a person came in and they need, they got billed for a lift assist and they, it didn't go through insurance properly or it didn't get covered through the proper channels. Yes, they can come to us so we can kind of look at that bill and help them explore the why it wasn't paid. Uh, but in some cases that, that is, I mean, it is a service that they're providing. It is a cost um, that they have to, to do to take that anguums out there and that crew. Uh, so that's, that's what we're trying to do in, in regards to the preventative aspect of it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Andrew Roser.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thanks for coming today. I appreciate your update. Uh, you know, we've had concerns at the Health Human Services Committee about the nutrition shippover. And I um, I, I appreciate what you tried to do with the Cedar Rail people and getting them the, the community center. Can you, I, that's my first question. How is that going with continually to serve people where you had to stop the service at their location of residence? How, how has that transition gone?
You know, I think the transition's gone well. I mean, that was a, those are always tough, tough chant, tough decisions to make, you know, in regards to, you know, we stopped it. In this to update everybody, we had a dining site at Cedar Rail apartment complex then in Marshfield community. Uh, we also had another senior dining site at the community center um, in Marshfield. We, so we made a tough decision to close the Cedar Rail uh, dining sites. Um, some of those individuals have taken meals on wheels and actually are, are eating together at that community room. So you know, they're essentially still getting the meal and still socializing as well. And then some of them are coming to the community center um, to take them, take part of the meal there as well.
Yeah, because I think the socialization is almost as important as the nutritional value of what you do. My second question is, uh, some of us have been very concerned about the criteria to get these meals. Do you see any asset testing in the future that would help to serve those of greatest need? And maybe aren't feeding people who could well afford to go to the performance for their lunch instead of coming to the Pemiri Center?
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate him questioning and honestly, I, I do think that there's some opportunity. Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate him questioning and honestly, I I do think that there's some opportunity at the federal level to change how those grants are distributed. So um and honestly, this caused us a lot of challenge recently. So we for our nutrition programmers get two pots of dollars coming in from the federal level and they're very distinctive pots of dollars. We get, one of them is for our senior conquer site dining and one of them is for our meals on wheels. Our greatest need is in our meals on wheels. It's completely underfunded when we run out of those hours exceedingly fast. We have dollars within our senior conjure good dining that we can, they only allow us to transfer a very small portion. So there's a lot of different things, including some of that means testing that you're dedicating. I do let something that you brought up as well. And in regards to concern, um I a lot of advocacy work kind of see in regards to that specific. Uh, if it were up to me, just give me the pound of dollars so that I can serve the people the most need. And then if there's some leftover things as a luxury, I can, I could use some others. So um, but that's that's where we're in right now. We are the grants and what they're telling us we have to do. So we're trying to look at how else we can develop service.
Yeah, because there's a low desire to serve the people that need, they'll see any. And I think that's where we're coming from as a Health and Human Services Committee is that we really want the people that need a service circs. And so whatever we can do to make sure that those people are getting what they need. And I don't mean weed out the people that maybe don't need it as much, but it it would be helpful. I think if we just really focus on that more socioeconomic boot shadens and the people that are not put up in cut, you know, sites.
In both of our nutrition programs have contribution or suggested contributions for that. Now they go, those suggested contributions aren't at a level that meet the actual price of the meal. So we're always losing some dollars in regards to that. However, we do want, uh we try to strategize around this. We don't want people to feel bad. It's, you know, if they really need it um for not paying at a level, but we also want people to know that they can afford it. This is what the total cost is. Uh, so it it really is a balancing act in regards to how we research that.
Yeah, thanks for what you do. And I think that we also need to be very appreciative of the Meals on Meals volunteers. All that uh donate for those meals on a regular basis. And I'm sure that you're put up, making sure that appreciate.
Absolutely. And I appreciate you bringing up the the volunteer aspect. So we have a stamp across our four county regional about about eighty employees. And we have over four hundred volunteers. So we did not do the operation we have without the volunteers that we have to prefer. So.
That's not deficient, Stuart. Time to use a second hair. Supervisor Schultz is outlining of the question and I'll ask it for me, type it in the chat.
Um, you recorded that you ranked first in the number of falls nationwide. Does that mean you are the least or the most?
The most, the most.
Very silly.
Yeah. Yeah, not that.
Is that where you want to be number one?
How does that establish that that you want to be on track?
Back, gotta do with we sell so much beer here.
You know, there's a lot of theories I could throw up, but there we go. I usually got beer. I don't know, but as you do have a locker baggers.
Supervisor Butky.
Thank you. Uh, you mentioned about, and Donna said it well, so he didn't have to put up with me out with some uh. The uh you said other states get more money than than what we do. Are it, are they doing something different there? Is it apples to apples or?
You know, and I I had a demographic that we just put together in regards to this so that we can continue to do some more advocacy in regards to this. So we can we, I have an infographic and actually I'll share it with trends. So you can get that out to the supervisors that show the states around us and what their state budgets, budget for the nutrition programs. Um, and it's honestly, some of it's mind blowing in regards to the differences in state Wisconsin. The state of Wisconsin contributes eight hundred and fifty two thousand dollars statewide for its nutrition programs. Now that's seventy two counties. So this take in regards to that terms. Now, I know that's a federal based program. I understand that, but the states also contribute to help support the citizens within that state. So we do have some work that we're doing. Again, we have an infographic. I'll share with you guys. You can see the differences of states around us. Now we've done a lot of advocacy to educate our representatives. Uh, we're inviting them into our organization. Uh, one of them is uh that'll arrive along with the Meals on Wheels um delivery. So we're just trying to get them to understand our programs, the impact of it and educate them so as they're making a decision on budget that they can make that that informed decision.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, Mike, I just want to say again, thanks. And I think that collaborative effort that we've had, you know, amongst the counties is certainly allowed us to maintain services at a much higher level than it would have been our own. At the same time, containing costly quick first increase we ever had from our perspective last year is minute. Uh, so thank you. Thanks all of all the cheers. Very much appreciate that. Appreciate it. Thank you, miss. Thanks. All right, they get me through everything on the packet. The important note here, because this happens every year, is next month's meeting because of Veterans Day is on November twelfth. It's not the section Tuesday, it's Wednesday. So, but then your calendar is right how every year, so we go, I forgot about that.
It is the, is the puppet hearing to the budget that nine and a half?
Yes, well, we, I love we said, we set the time yet, but it's
See me and I shut the time.
Okay. Yes, then design. Yes, both those November twelfth, all right, Wednesday, not Tuesday, that they statues here. We don't have a choice. See if we wanted to. Supervisor Boyd.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment under, it reflects your to Mr. Lightman's.
Yes.
Come. I'm an old man with a lot of experience. Doesn't make me smart or intelligent, but I have the body of experience. I sat where you people sat. I was a department head here at Woodpointe for twelve years, eighteen years with Connor's office. Twelve years as your electric county coroner. I sat where you are. I put six years on the Sawyer County Executive Commission. Same as your operators. I sat on that side. I'm appalled to think that we're gonna hire approximately nineteen new employees at one point nine million dollars. And we only want to give our employees one percent. Uh, I I feel there's something wrong there. I, our highway commissioner needs tuning trucks. He needs those trucks or he wouldn't put in pork. I'll be in favor of giving a two and a half percent raise if we would forego a couple of these employees. I'd be in favor of giving the highway commissioner his two new trucks he wishes. This will help him.
We will have that, those discussions obviously will continue at committee level and then obviously the budget comes from before the full board at that time. So is there anything else to come before the board today? Anything else? All right, seeing nothing, I will declare the meeting adjourned.